Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Jody, could you call the roll, please?
Dennis.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hallenbaugh.
Here.
Odericio.
Here.
Phipps.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Sherry.
Here.
The minutes from our January 16th meeting were distributed for your perusal. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Okay. Jody, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up for lobby visitation this evening?
We do. Wendy Manning.
If you could just give your name and address for the record.
Sure. I'm Wendy Manning at 865 West Wooster Street. And I'm here with a very quick update again on my favorite topic, BG Dog Parks. And just want to let you know that we're now an incorporated legal entity. And so we're really looking forward to working with the city on establishing a dog park in Bowling Green. And just wanted to give you that update. We've elected a board. And I was elected to serve as president of the board. So we'll work with all of you in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thanks.
Mary Hinkleman.
Mary Hinkleman, 217 South Church Street. And I am back here representing Visit BG Ohio. I had distributed our annual report and I was curious if any of you have any questions about the information I shared. Nothing?
I'm hearing none.
Awesome. Well, that makes it easy for me. Just need you to know that we work every day at making the hospitality experience better for Bowling Green. And if you ever have any suggestions, please let us know. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Kathleen Davis. Dennis, I'm sorry.
Happens all the time. Yes, I'm Kathleen Dennis, 402 Buttonwood Avenue. And I'm here this evening to let you all know that we've been invited to an event design workshop that is Bowling Green Save Our Neighborhoods Group. This will be conducted by a group of 10 professionals who are masters in PhD program students in the BGSU College of Business Administration. And the event is conducted by Dr. Stephen Caddy, who's a member of the faculty in the BGSU Business Administration. And we've sent you an email with an invitation to join us for this event. We're hoping that one or more of you will be able to join us either part of the day or all day. We're going to be meeting on Saturday, February 10th, from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the BGSU Levitt Commons. Breakfast will be served at 8:00 o'clock and lunch will be also provided. We'll begin our meeting with the student consultants sometime between 8:30 and 9:00 o'clock. So our event, the topic that we're planning on covering is financially accessible housing in Bowling Green. And the way the workshop works is that a community organization acts as a client. So in this case, Bowling Green Song will be this client. And we're going to bring a list of our, a group of our stakeholders together and to talk about an event at a later date. So we're essentially developing an agenda, an agenda for an event that will happen at a later date, some sort of meeting or summit or workshop. So we're thinking this is going to be some sort of, something on the order of a town, a town meeting or a town hall meeting. And we're going to address the specific question related to our topic. The student consulting teams will act, will meet with the clients, we're the client, and they will, will meet with us to develop a proposal for the agenda for our event. So that's the way the program works. The client receives free consulting in return for a real life experience for the students. So the question that our group will bring to the consultants to address in designing a collaborative town hall type workshop is the following. How can we, the various stakeholders present at the meeting, increase the availability of decently, decent financially accessible housing in the city of Bowling Green, whether that is in the older neighborhoods, the mixed use neighborhood zones, mobile Harlem parks, or the north or south ends of town? So four or five of the BG Song members are already attending the full day session. Martha Wilkie, who is our organization's liaison to the city's administration, will attend for the morning session. And we're just extending that invitation to the rest of you and really hoping that some of you will agree to participate. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for the invitation.
That's everyone.
That brings us to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
From the Finance Committee, I have three ordinances. First, an ordinance amending and adopting sections of Chapter 33 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio concerning employment policies. An ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for sidewalk improvements, paving, striping, de-icing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. And an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract and/or participate in state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase and/or lease of vehicles, equipment, and completion of projects, as well as the trade-in or current outright sale, or outright sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
From the Transportation and Safety Committee of Council, I have a resolution adopting the school travel plan under the guidelines of the State of Ohio's Safe Routes to School Program.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
From the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing the city attorney to file a petition for annexation of parcel number owned by the city of Bowling Green, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. And then lastly, from utilities, I have two ordinances. Ordinance authorizing utilities director to enter into construction contract or contracts for the Clarifier Improvements Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility. And an ordinance authorizing utilities director to apply for a loan and execute a loan agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority, O-E-P-A, O-W-D-A, for a Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, W-P-C-L-F, program for construction of the Clarifier Improvements Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility. All right. That brings us to the reports section of our meeting. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. To begin my report this evening, I'm pleased to welcome Mick Murray, our Public Works Director, to provide you with a brief overview of an item that is on your agenda this evening. That being the local plan that is being developed for the state routes to school, or Safe Routes to School Program. It's a really exciting program. And I'm eager for Mick to share some of the highlights of that program with you this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to Mick.
Good evening. With the support of the Ohio Department of Transportation, the city of Bowling Green has collaborated with BG City Schools, BG parochial and non-parochial schools, and community stakeholders to develop a school's travel plan. The school travel plan was developed with guidance from a 15-member committee comprised of city and school officials. Local planning consultants, Revelry and Manikin Smith Group, have assisted the city in the plan's development, meeting with school officials and identifying areas along critical routes to schools needing safety upgrades. Fewer kids today walk and bike to school in the Safe Routes to School Program can be part of the solution. In 1969, 48% of kids walked or biked to school. Today, 13% or less walk or bike. School travel by private vehicle accounts for 35% of morning rush hour traffic. In 1969, 89% of students who lived within one mile of school walked or biked. Today, less than 30% walk or bike. The goal of the plan is to assist children in grades K through 12, including those with disabilities, to walk, bike, or roll to school safely. Applicants may be eligible for funding of up to 100% of project cost. The project limits are $500,000 per year for infrastructure countermeasures and $60,000 per year for non-infrastructure countermeasures. A total of $5 million will be allocated statewide in 2024. Funds for infrastructure projects must be within two miles of the target school and include operational and physical improvements that establish safer and fully accessible pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, such as crossings, walkways, trails, and bikeways. Non-infrastructure projects include education, encouragement, and enforcement activities intended to affect student or driver behavior and evaluation activities to monitor the impacts on the Safe Routes to School Program. When meeting with schools and considering countermeasures, we utilize the BG Bicycle Facilities Map. Glenn Grisdale of Revelry and myself visited all BG City Parochial and Nonparochial Schools. We discussed countermeasures with officials from each school and witnessed the arrival and dismissals. Teachers conducted travel tallies in the fall of '23 to gather data on transportation to schools. A total of 3,182 morning trips and 2,683 afternoon trips were tallied, resulting in 52% to 60% of students traveling to school in family vehicles, 23% to 28% riding the bus, and only 5% to 10% walking, and 2% riding bikes. The schools also sent home parent surveys. 179 individuals responded. The results of the survey showed that the distance to school was the number one reason to keep parents from allowing their children to walk or ride to school. The amount of traffic along the route cited was 54.2%. Speed and, or traffic along the route, 52%, 53%. Safety of intersections and crossings was 51%. Weather was 40%. Sidewalks or pathways were 35%. Time was cited with 24%. Adults needed to walk or bike with their students was 17.4%. Child's before or after-school activities was 17%. Violence or crime was 16%. And convenience of driving was 12%. And the need for crossing guards was 8.3%. The poll also showed parents' opinions on how safe walking and biking to school is for their children, and only 10% in Bowling Green thought it was safe. 35% cited as neutral. 30% cited unsafe. 19% very unsafe. And only 6% were very safe. Infrastructure countermeasures were identified through our meetings with school officials, as well as public input. There are a total of 37 countermeasures. Although only 33 are shown in this draft, we added four more from public comment. We identified 28 non-counter, non-infrastructure countermeasures. And all the countermeasures are laid out on a map in the plan. The next step for finalizing the plan is for Manikin Smith to provide us with estimates for two projects that were recommended to the school travel committee. The first was a shared use path from Crim Elementary to Carter Park. And second was two pedestrian hybrid beacons, one at East Wooster near Enterprise, and another on Poe Road in front of the high school and middle school to replace the RFB that is currently there. We are also awaiting a couple of letters of support from area agencies. This resolution is a necessary step to help us pursue funding for these countermeasures. And that concludes my report. Subject to any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
Thank you, Mick, for that. The next step for getting funding, is there a specific deadline for getting this resolution passed?
The application is due on March 1st.
Okay.
We plan to have the two countermeasures along with the letters of support in the final plan for the February 19th meeting. This resolution is necessary for us to move forward with the estimates for those two countermeasures.
Do you anticipate much change between the draft that's available now and the final version?
The only difference will be the, the two countermeasures identified will have estimates with them. And there will be letters of support in that final draft.
Okay. So the gist of the resolution would be so that we can ask for funding for the two counter, two countermeasures?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mick.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, Mick, thank you for sharing those details. And I also want to thank our community partners who have been such willing and active partners. Bowling Green City Schools, this is both our public schools and our parochial schools. Our planning group partners, Revelry and Manikin Smith, and all of our community stakeholders, those who have provided feedback either by attending sessions, feedback sessions at the Veterans Center a couple of weeks ago, or for providing comments on the internet. I'm really excited about the opportunities that are discovered through this process. I think the survey results do reveal to us some opportunities for improvement that if we're able to follow through on some of these funding applications, will result in improvements that hopefully will make it more reasonable for some students to either walk or ride their bikes to school. I think all of us would agree that that would be beneficial. So I'm very supportive of these efforts. I look forward to council giving consideration to approval of the resolution that will then allow us to continue along the process for submitting an application. That completes my report. Subject to any questions that you may have?
So do anyone have any questions for the mayor this evening?
Yeah. Mr. President? Have, has there been any shift to placing more enforcement resources in the downtown area in recent weeks? Let's see, I mean, maybe that's just me, but it seems like there's been a greater presence, particularly during the morning commute.
I, I can only speak from my personal experience. And I'm not the most observant driver. I have, I have seen multiple police cars in the downtown area. You know, radar checking drivers, including myself. So fortunately.
Is this your way of telling us you got a speeding ticket last week, Mark?
No, I'm just saying, fortunately, I am a law-abiding citizen.
Jeff, I'm going to let Lori respond to that. She made no more than I do. But I can tell you that from my experience, I've got in my new office upstairs here a really great vantage point of North Main Street. And in the last, yeah, I frequently see police presence on North Main Street. So as you know, you know, we got a lot of streets and our police officers cover a lot of areas. So it's difficult for them to be in one place for a long time. But I knew though, do know that when they're there, they're in pretty, they're in locations where they can be pretty readily spotted. I think if people are paying attention.
Or even when they're not.
Certainly, we would encourage people to adhere to the speed limit in the downtown area. And increased enforcement sometimes is warranted in these vital areas as reminders of how important that is to all sharing these streets in our downtown.
Anything for the mayor? All right. Thank you very much. Municipal Administrator, Mr. Tredder.
Last week, I shared with you some staff updates, and we have an additional update. We had mentioned the departure of our income tax commissioner. And I am pleased to share with you that Mayor Osbacher and Finance Director Pinkert have invited, have appointed Carlin Pfeffer as our new income tax commissioner. Carlin has long worked in our income tax office. She has been a friendly face, working as an income tax specialist for many years for the city of Bowling Green. Prior to her service here, she had worked as commissioner in Napoleon, Ohio. And we are pleased with her promotion to this position and think she'll do a terrific job for the citizens of Bowling Green. That's all I have to report this evening. Subject to your questions?
Are there any questions for Ms. Tredder?
I also want to congratulate the administration on their stellar pick of Martha and welcome her to council meeting. You have a different vantage point, but you're certainly a familiar face. So congratulations on that. And I think whoever it is that you appoint as tax commissioner, if you're listening, I think you're doing a great, you will do a great job.
We'll pass that along to Carlin.
Please do.
I, I will.
All right. Anything for Lori? Thank you very much. How successful are we at Mr. Brown this evening?
He's participating by watching.
Okay. But he's, we can't talk to him?
No.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Brown they would not like answered immediately? Okay. Public Infrastructure Director.
I know reporters have questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. O'Connell this evening? Okay. That brings us to council committee reports. Any council committee reports this evening?
Yeah, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met prior to this meeting and received the 2023 year-end financial update from the Finance Director. The committee members had no issues or concerns as a result of that update.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll just take a moment to remind everyone that at 6:00 in council chambers on February 20th, that's before our second council meeting in February, there will be a committee of the whole meeting to discuss our befunding. This will be a work session for city council. There will not be public comment during that meeting. If there's nothing else, Jody, could you lead us in the reading of legislation?
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3861 for first reading. Resolution adopting the school travel plan under the guidelines of the State of Ohio's Safe Routes to School Program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we suspend the rules and give Resolution 3861 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
No.
Okay. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3861.
Resolution number 3861 for second and third readings. Resolution adopting the school travel plan under the guidelines of the State of Ohio's Safe Routes to School Program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt Resolution 3861.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, what, what time did every other member of city council get this plan? I am a huge supporter of this initiative. I can't vote for this. I received this today at 4:00. So I mean, I'm, which I don't, I'd be happy to vote for it two weeks from now. I can't get legislation at 4:00 and vote on it at 7:23.
Yeah. Well, this is a resolution that allows us to move forward with getting estimates.
We will note that a draft, draft plan has been on the website. There was a public meeting about this at the Veterans Building as well.
I, I attended the public meeting. I thought it was very informative. I am hugely supportive of the plan. Go ahead and take a bow.
Any other discussion? All right. Jody?
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
No.
Harold.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 3861 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9166 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting sections of Chapter 33 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio concerning employment practices. Ordinance number 9167 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, de-icing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 9168 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts and/or participate in the state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase and/or lease of vehicles, equipment, and completion of projects, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes. Ordinance number 9169 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into construction contracts for the Clarifier Improvements Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility. Ordinance number 9170 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to apply for a loan and execute a loan agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority, O-E-P-A, O-W-D-A, for a Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, W-P-C-L-F, program for the construction of the Clarifier Improvements Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility. Ordinance number 9171 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the city attorney to file a petition for annexation of parcel number owned by the city of Bowling Green, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 9171 its second and third reading.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 9171.
Ordinance number 9171 for second and third readings. Ordinance authorizing the city attorney to file a petition for annexation of parcel number owned by the city of Bowling Green, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 9171.
Second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Okay.
The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 9171.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9171.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I can give a little bit of background here. This property, the city-owned property, is at the intersection of North Main Street and Bishop Road, which is across from a property that will be the future site of Abbott Labs. That was a property that we annexed two years ago. So, it's recommended for consistency that the city is going to go ahead and seek annexation of this property at North Main and Bishop. I'll remind everyone that approval of this ordinance tonight does not authorize the annexation. It just gives authority to start the annexation petition process.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Jody?
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9171 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9161 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 31.04 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 9162 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Sections 33.01G, Pay Bands 3, 4, and 5, and 33.01J of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established. Ordinance number 9163 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Sections 33.09A and 33.09C of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding fire division composition. Ordinance number 9164 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.18A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salaried employees not subject to overtime pay. Ordinance number 9165 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Sections 33.22A6 and A7 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to sick leave. Resolution for third reading. Ordinance number 9159 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing an agreement between the City of Bowling Green, Ohio and the Wood County Regional Airport Authority.
Mr. President. Mr. Robinett.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9159.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9159 is adopted. Is there any other business to come before council? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are adjourned.